Do we have everybody there? Is this going to be in attendance?
Yep.
All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Kayden Urban Renewal Agency. This is December 8th. This is our 3 o'clock board meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Rhonda Mitchell.
Here.
Steve Meyer. Colin Meehan.
Here.
Michael Thayer.
Here.
Randy McIntyre.
Here.
Matt Roder.
Here.
Joy Richards.
Here.
All right. Matt, do you mind leading us to the pledge of allegiance?
Okay, Rhonda, I'll be glad to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? There is none? Any have calls for conflict of interest? Okay. Are there any visitors or public comments today?
There are not. Nope.
No visitors.
Okay. Can I get approval for the consent calendar?
I saw moved that we approved the consent calendar.
Second.
They moved and seconded, any discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Rhonda Mitchell.
Yes.
Colin Meehan.
Yes.
Michael Thayer.
Yes.
Randy McIntyre.
Yes.
Matt Roder.
Yes.
Joy Richards.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Under new business, addendum for Welsh Commerce contract. Melissa, is this something we should address?
Yes, so our contract expires each year and so this is for another year.
Are there, were there any changes to this?
There are not. So we have a new hourly rates schedule just based on whatever our current rates are right now and this just has it expire for, you know, another year. So one more year. It expired in November, but we didn't have a meeting in November.
Are there any questions regarding this?
Just do you expect that it would change the budget?
No.
It's been to me.
Just a question. I'm looking at the page, addendum number three. It says effective date of master agreement, December 14th, 2022. So we have a master agreement and then we have a renewal. That's an addendum, is how that goes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, so all the terms of the master agreement still apply.
So basically just the hourly rates are the ones that...
Yeah, the hourly rates change and the turn, the time of the contract changes because that original contract was only for a year. That's how you guys wanted to do that.
Annual renewal stuff?
Yeah.
Got it.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment three.
Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve amendment three for Welsh Commerce to continue as, what would be the term?
The, it's executive director services is what it's called.
Second.
They moved and seconded, any additional questions? All right, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Rhonda Mitchell.
Yes.
Colin Meehan.
Yes.
Michael Thayer.
Yes.
Randy McIntyre.
Yes.
Matt Roder.
Yes.
Joy Richards.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. Melissa, do you want to give us the Civic Center update, the new steps?
Yeah, yeah, so we keep just kind of stepping along, kind of, kind of slowly, but we're making progress. Last week, the building committee met, which was Rhonda, Steve, and Randy, and we met, and me, and we met with Lisa from the city and the mayor. And then we've also been meeting with the senior center folks and they've been, we've toured several facilities. I think that we updated that at the last meeting. And so just the senior center is getting a good feel for what they want or need out of a facility. And so they've been feeding me some floor plans, ideas, you know, and I think that we are to the point where we can go back to the architect now that we have a better feel for what we're looking for. My understanding, coming out at the meeting with the city, is that they were going to reach out to the architect and have the architect help them with kind of a needs assessment because I think we've, we've got the senior center portion pretty, pretty well fleshed out now. It's this city community center portion that needs some help. And so the thought is that it's still going to be phased so that we can, like, we can add things to the, the project or take away depending on budget. And then the thought is still to get the contractor on board as soon as we're at like maybe 15% drawings so that we can have the contractor weighing in on the design and value, you know, value engineering it and that kind of a thing. So the other thing to update you on is we're leaning towards, so it's one building, but it has two parts to it and the senior center really needs to own their part because they need to kind of control their destiny. They need to be able to rent their space out if they want to because that's a big part of how senior centers generate money to do all the services that they do. And so we've, we've been considering condo plating the building so that, and then Pete, I don't know Pete's on, but Pete, we are talking about condo plating and have covenances.
I am.
Okay, perfect. So we were talking about having covenances that would dictate, you know, kind of what happens with the senior center piece if the senior center were to go defunct at some point so that it's still available for the community. Does it revert to the city or, or how does that work? So that's kind of how we've been stepping through this interesting, you know, environment that we're trying to navigate here. And the city did seem, this seemed like they liked that idea as well. So I guess they weren't opposed to it. I don't know if they liked it, but they weren't opposed to that idea. They thought that that would be a way to, you know, have the seniors control their destiny.
Is, is there an advantage to the city in any way of doing that as opposed to some sort of really long-term lease for a dollar a year type of situation where the city retains ownership if, if something ever, if the senior center went away without having to sort of go back and say, you know, what's fair market value if the city needs to acquire it back from the senior center or anything like that?
I think that part of the challenge was if the city owns it, could the senior center sublease their space? And that was like a real hangup for the city. And so trying to find a way, we thought that, we don't have it all worked out yet, but we thought that we could handle it through covenances in the plat, what happens if the senior center were to go away so that the city wouldn't have to purchase it if that were what happened and that the senior center couldn't say, sell it.
Right.
Right, so we want to protect kind of what you all have in mind for this facility.
So it's some sort of deed restriction. Would they have to pay fair market value for it or is there, it work out some deal where it's a dollar?
Correct, it's, it's going to be more than a dollar.
They wouldn't have, they would, they wouldn't have to pay fair market value. They, the urban renewal law only requires fair value and whatever that is is really up to the agency. It's not fair market value, it's fair value, so.
Right, so they're gonna, they're, as soon as we have some pretty pictures to show, some renderings, they're going to launch into a capital campaign they're pretty excited about. So I think they'll be able to generate a good amount of money and then you guys can decide if that's their fair value than what they generate.
I have a question, if that's okay. My understanding is that if urban renewal funds some portion of all of the senior center, they can't own it. So if they can't own it, how can they have control of their destiny, so to say? I know we've been talking about a lease here, but can we sell the building if we say we finance or we portion it? Can we sell it to them? I'm just concerned about whether or not they can own something that we fund.
They can, yeah, as long as we follow the, the fair value rules under the urban renewal law.
So, okay, so if it's a 10% fine funding that we do or 90% or whatever, we, we can, we can somehow transfer ownership to them based on an agreement?
You know, it's just, it's just like when, when we bought the lot with the car loss, right? And we were admitting, we sold.
Exactly.
Okay.
That was the same process on a smaller scale, but, yeah.
Well, what, why this came to mind is that Cortlande had a new fire department built and they, my understanding, they couldn't sell it to the city, but they did leasing to the, the city? Which is maybe just another option, I, I don't know, but that was the new one on...
Yeah, leasing, leasing is another option, but, but, yeah, urban renewal agencies can, they can convey property to, to the city or to what, what's easily referred to as a proponent and this, the seniors.
And do we have any indication from the senior center on, do they, do they have a campaign that's going to get started? Do they have a goal of what they think they can raise? You know, like what kind of participation can we anticipate from the seniors to help with this project?
I know that they're, they're working on a variety of avenues to raise funds. I don't know what their goal is. I, I mean, we've, we've told them that it needs to be substantial, you know, so, I mean, right, Steve's, Steve's now here. Rhonda, Steve's here. So, I mean, Steve and I have talked to them.
I think we've intimated a million dollars.
Mm-hmm, somewhere around a million.
And I don't know what they're doing with it after that, but one of the things we suggested was that the specialty stuff that goes in their space, like kitchen equipment, they would fund. But that, those discussions have happened over the last couple of months and I don't know what's happened in between. We heard they had a gift and there was speculation that that gift was worth $100,000. I think it was a thing, not a cash, but we don't know much about that either.
Yeah, I think that they're just sort of waiting to, I think that the, the advice of Steve and some others where before you launch the campaign, have something already in the, in the pot. Like we've already raised this much, our goal is this because you don't want to start the campaign with nothing. And then also have the pretty pictures so people see what they're donating to and, and that kind of a thing.
The, the numbers that I've heard largely come from Jim Fochette. And Jim Fochette has been around town for a long time, 25 years, and worked in fundraising projects, lots of them. And his rule of thumb that I've heard him recite was you need to have half the money lined up before you announce a campaign. So if the seniors had an objective of a million dollars, Fochette's rule of thumb had been need to have $500,000 committed in large gifts because you're never going to get to a big number, $25 at a time or even $100 at a time. But I don't know whether the seniors heard that or listened to it or believed it or whether they've gone out to find some fundraising council to show them how to do it.
Well, you made that suggestion a while ago and I think that's a great idea if they would make that suggestion and hire somebody that has done it before and proven. Is this Jim Fochette, is he, that, could be that person?
I think so. He's, um, he's close to my age and I, but I don't think he's fully retired. And I just ran across him recently on somebody's fundraising campaign. So he must continue to do that or maybe he's choosing selectively what projects he wants to work on. He doesn't want to take on the difficult ones, take on the ones that are feasible. Rhonda, have you seen Jim Fochette in recent times?
Again, I saw him at Rotary, I believe, on Friday and I did also hear he was working some, and I can't think of who, what campaign he was working on, but I'm sure he would, he should be approached or talked to.
I don't know about other people around town who do that.
They should, I mean, they should reach out to Inovia, which is a donor advised funds group. They may have some donors that would be aligned with that vision, but I don't have a contact at Inovia.
I have some contacts there and also the Idaho Community Foundation, Boise, has some board members from here and there's a project with the name Cortlande in it. It was a group of people trying to pay attention to Idaho Community Foundation engagement here in Cortlande.
That would be Heidi Rogers.
Yeah, might be. And others, maybe Sue Thilo. So I don't know what the seniors have done. Maybe we should, rather than speculate, rather than get together with them and see what they're doing.
Yeah.
Because we're moving down the road of, I mean, a bunch of the pieces of this puzzle seem to be coming together.
I can set up another meeting with Rhonda Newton and Lisa and see. I haven't met with them since we toured the one in Spokane, Steve, so, and Randy. So, but I know that they're, they're doing things. They're not just sitting idle. So we can get an update and I think it would be good to give them these contacts as resources for them because it does seem like Rhonda has a strong fundraising background. She's, she does this, you know, she has done this on several nonprofits before and so she's raring to go and if we can feed them some contacts, we could probably get it done.
Steve, from your perspective as a developer, what do you think about this idea of condo-ing this building out? I mean, it...
I, I think it has some promise. We've had, we meaning Melissa and Rhonda Mitchell and I have had a number of conversations about continuity. And if it belongs to us and then our successor is the city, what's the best way to structure this so it has as long a life as it is feasible? We don't know about continuity of the senior center either. So one of the thoughts was if we make a condominium declaration on it, that'll be just a building part that, that the seniors occupy and we would put some covenants on that scene, that portion, which is the seniors, would say if this organization unfolds, blows up, whatever, fails, that that space comes back to the city. So it doesn't become an asset that's liquid for the seniors. And, and I suspect when they go through cycles of success and failure, it's all about leadership and there would be certainly some, if they were in a period of stress, that they would say, well, let's sell this, our sheriff's building to somebody else and get the cash and, and we should guard against that.
Yeah.
Same is true when the city council runs into opinions that they don't want anything to do with this. Then what happens? Well, we really can't either forecast that or control them. So the continuity is dependent on the city and the current city administrator would like to see some functionality in that building to relieve some space pressure here and maybe Melissa's already described that, but Melissa had the idea that this space could be turned into administrative space, this council room, and use one of the larger public rooms for city council meetings, like the city of Cortlande does. And I thought that had interesting promise also. Well, there's a bunch of ideas, but most importantly, I've done some condominium declarations, like the building that has the cancer center in it. We gave the cancer center to the hospital and has a condominium interest in that larger building. So all the spaces in the building are individual condominium units of which the hospital owns a big one and we have the rest of them. So, and we've done that at a couple of different places and it works. And there are documents, sometimes a little complex and has to be surveyed, so there's a map and the condominium rules are that the owner owns the surface of the wall. We call it paint-to-paint.
Painted, yeah.
And so the wall itself is limited common area in between the units. The same is true for limited common area on the parking. And, and one of the most important parts of this project will be managing the parking. It's easy to make spaces for people, but parking takes, you know, cars take up a lot more space than people. And, and so the use of the limited common area of parking will have to manage both on the side and on the next door side, which I think now belongs to the city, is that correct? The old cotton club is, is now, didn't we build that for the city and give it to them?
You still own those three parcels? So the Owl Cafe, the little one, and the, the one to the south you still own?
By us or, do we give it to the city? I thought maybe we sold it to them for a dollar.
The parking?
The parking lot.
No, you lease it, there's an, there's a hundred dollar a year lease or something like that. You still own it.
Yeah.
So we still own it?
Yeah.
So with some agreement with the city, with the less, plus E, we could include those stalls as, if we wanted to, limited common area as the condominium or some arrangement where
Right.
that space is utilized by that building. The hard part about all of this is, is the cyclical nature of the demand for the parking. You know, you can't have big functions there unless you can park all the cars. And so making the people's meeting spaces is constrained by how many cars we can park. And when we were talking with Lisa and the mayor last week, I guess, there was talk about enlarging this parking lot right next door to the city hall where the statue is and the playgrounds, moving that stuff further to the east and also turning the baseball field into parking.
Right.
And the city seems to have a priority for that.
Right.
In their minds, at least the mayor and the minister. Do you have any more insight into that, Matt?
I'm sorry, no.
Is that what I said about right? That there's a priority on our capital list for these improvements next to this building, the park project? Turning the former shop space into park space and so forth?
There's a list, but they have not been prioritized.
Okay.
That's how I understand it because that issue came up with the list and someone said, wow, that's got to be the priority. I said, no, it's just, it's a list of possibilities and we have to list them all because we don't know when these will take effect.
Sure. And I think when Melissa produced the list, you know, you got to put some on the top of the page and some on the bottom of the page, so it's, it's a point of discussion to start.
Sure.
Correct. And the city, my understanding is they, they're working with a consultant. You know how we did a really high level plan just to make sure this all kind of made sense? The city has taken that and is working with a consultant to develop a more detailed plan. So I think that'll help also.
Is that something that's been going on for a while or is that?
No, it's just, it's just getting, it's just getting started.
The survey started last Saturday at the tree lighting. They have a survey that everyone can take to kind of, they're going to redo a survey, they're going to have a run, I think, through the end of March for more public comment to establish the priorities because they have probably more, as you said, more items on the list than they have priorities.
That's new, I haven't heard of that.
Yeah, the consultant...
QR code, you can scan it and they're going, going to be doing a survey of the community again.
I think Randy's going to sit on the steering committee for this, for this study and the consultant interviewed Rhonda and I a few weeks ago. So it's just in the very beginning stages.
That's great.
Seems as if their vision was similar to what we presented. I guess we paid just for really, for this preliminary study.
Yeah.
And we just said it was a preliminary thing, just kind of show the space and so they're going to come up with priorities for the space now.
So do we need to get, before that goes out to the public, far enough along in our planning to have a rendering of this building so that people have a chance to know what is being discussed?
I think that's our goal. So you'll see that the action I would like to take is I, I do have a meeting set up tomorrow with the architect to, our next part to this project, which would be, you know, wandering through maybe a 15% set so that we can have that to go out with the CMGC proposal.
One of the things that Lisa, city administrator, talked about was the city hiring some sort of a planning advisor, consultant person to help her evaluate what kind of space needs were around the city hall, I guess. were around the city hall, I guess.
Right.
And, uh, I think we talked with her about not planning for next year, but planning for five years and 10 years, because we're only going to do this once.
Right.
And it's, it's a bit complicated because of the Hura rules. And we were reading the code, Rhonda had the code, and there's an opportunity for interpretation of the million dollar limit that applies to urban renewal agencies. One way you read it could be interpreted to mean the city without having to go get a vote. Another way of reading it is not clear. Maybe it says not include the city.
I mean, it says public funds, so...
Yeah.
I mean, the city's funds are public funds too. It says excluding federal funds. That's what the code says. So the city's funds and our, and Hura's funds are not federal, so...
And that, that's one we don't have much control over. And I think every year is going to bring additional scrutiny in the legislature from some contingent of the legislature who don't like private renewal agencies.
Sure. So senior centers, community centers can both be built and that code section doesn't apply. It's when it's a sports complex, which the gym meets that definition, or an administrative building meets, you know, is another, is another thing. So we just need to make sure that what this project is, is a community center and a senior center.
So the, the notion that it can be overflow space for the recreation department, which is one of Lisa's objectives.
Right.
And that's part of the gym discussion too, probably doesn't work.
Right. And we've told her that several times. So it doesn't mean though, that phase two of this building that Hura has nothing to do with couldn't add those types of facilities. It's just this project that Hura's involved in can't have those things. So we've made sure a gym would fit. So in the future, if they want to build a gym, they could do that. And also if there were a huge private donor that wanted to fund the gym, then I, then we could do that, because it does say as long as it's, you know, just not public funds. So, I mean, who knows? Maybe somebody steps up and wants to do that, but we can't use Hura's dollars or, my understanding with talking with Pete, is it says public funds. So the city's money is also part of that.
That's correct. So if, if this, if we build this after we're gone and closed, could the city come back and, and fund an addition to it, or a series of additions which fell underneath the million dollar benchmark?
It, it's a, it's a code for urban renewal. So the, I mean, the, the city, in the future, if they did a phase two that you weren't involved in, and that you had already transferred the project, the property to the city, they could do other things. We just can't have it be a part of Hura's project.
Peter, is that you? I hear a voice. Could the city do this in four phases of eight, $900,000 a piece, over 10 years, and have not run afoul of the law?
Yes, because after, after Hura's gone, it would no longer be a, basically an urban renewal project. So they could, they could add phases by themselves, but then 202905A wouldn't kick in because there wouldn't be a, any urban renewal funding anymore, so.
But it, but what I thought Melissa was saying is that that piece of the code applied to municipalities, that they, municipalities also have this threshold, and if it's more than a million dollars, you gotta go get a vote.
If there's urban renewal funds in the pot.
So if we're gone, then the city can do whatever they want.
Yes. Well, I don't know if they can do whatever they want, but this code section doesn't apply. So you can't say Hura's going to give 999,000, and the city's going to give 999,000, and you know, have this code not apply, because the code says the public funds can't equal more than a million.
So one of the ideas that we talked about with Lisa was, um, having part of the building suitable for a second story.
Right.
And, and we talked about it has to have an elevator because it has to meet the handicap codes. And to do all that stuff, you gotta do it in the first phase. And we've done that before, where we have an elevator, uh, and sometimes if it's a hydraulic one that has a jack shaft to the floor, you gotta do that first. There's others that don't require that. But maybe we, depending on the money, we could make provisions for a second floor, or the least expensive long-term way is build the second floor with, as a shell, and just leave it empty. Doesn't have an elevator, has enough heat to keep it from freezing, has to be fire sprinkled. And city could come by later and get, build out the interior finishes, and then they had a different set of rules to follow.
Sure.
Steve, it all depends on, on the, what it, the cost is and what our budget is, on how, how much we can build this building.
Exactly.
Right.
So we, that's, that's part of our due diligence that we're working on with the architect and contract the cost to build and what we can spend.
So as you can hear, there's a lot of ideas bouncing around, and I think that's ideal. More ideas, the better, and rule out the ones that are impractical, and work on the others and see if we can make them work.
And Melissa, you, we need to vote to put out a 15% plan?
No, I, I'm not even sure if it is a true action item. The intent is that I will, if, if you guys are, are okay with this, I will go meet with the architect, explain to them what we want their scope to be for this 15% set, and then bring a contract to you guys at the next meeting to get started on that.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's why I made it an action item, so that you're like, yep, go do it.
Go do it. Um, is that a motion? Do I, do I think, what's the motion? I make a motion.
Do we need it, do we need a motion or making an action item?
Since it's an action, it, since it's an action item, uh, you should, yeah, somebody should specify a motion directing Melissa to, to go forward.
Okay.
I move to have Melissa meet with the, uh, BWA and get 15% plans and a contract to bring to us at the next meeting.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Melissa. This is exciting. Um, it looks like we have your executive director report.
Right. So there's not a lot on it. Um, the, the big news is that the city council passed the expansion on November 18th, and it has to advertise in the paper, which maybe has happened. It was planned to be the first part of December, so it, it may, it may be now, but, um, the ordinance, but yeah, that passed.
It was in the paper last week.
Okay.
It was in the paper last week.
Okay, perfect. So that's exciting. So the reason, if you remember, for that was mostly to be able to help the city with those important kind of intersection projects, which I know that the city is getting their ducks in a row for now. So, um, so that's all in our project list as well. So that's why we're thinking that the civic center would, would be designed in a way that we can add or remove portions of it, depending on how much money needs to be spent on intersections. Um, we just don't have a lot of time, and sometimes those intersection projects will take a bit, because you have to design them, then you have to get right of way and move to the construction. So having all of that happen with several projects, you know, by 2029, 2030, might not happen. So wanting to use the money that Hura has, we can kind of give and take with the civic center project. So that was really exciting. Um, and then we're just actively working on the audit with the auditor for 2025. So this is good, because we're ahead of the game compared to what we've done in the past. So we've already fed them a lot of information, and they're in the stage where they ask us specific questions about various transactions and stuff like that. So we're getting pretty close. Um, and we also had to submit reports to the state, um, on the financial transparency, and we did all of that in advance of the December 1st deadline.
Great.
That's what I know.
Melissa, did you, before I got here, and I'm sorry I was late, guys, talk to the group about the discussion we had on the money which might come back from Ramsey Road?
I haven't, no.
Should we do that?
Um, sure. Yeah, so last year, year before last, um, the city came to Hura because they had the federal aid project that did Ramsey Road around the airport. And the engineer's estimate was more than they had funds for. Do you remember that? And so they couldn't go to bid without having the whole amount of money, which is different than Hura likes to operate, because you would rather have an agreement and then reimburse, like as needed. So we wrote that agreement with Pete's help to say that if ultimately they didn't need to use the money, that Hura would get it back. Well, it's looking like that project came in significantly under budget and we should get the money back. So the city's working with LTAC on the audit and getting the money back. And, um, so our project list might go up, because we might have more money than we anticipated. So, um, you all had given the city like 1.76 million, I think, so it's quite a lot.
Any, any ideas of an approximate number that we might get back?
It sounded like the amount that the project was under budget was more than that. So I, as long as when the audit goes completely through, we were probably going to get it all back.
Wow.
At the time, I remember Alan Zara explaining that, uh, the city had to put up that money in cash.
Right.
So they did.
That was LTAC's requirement to go to bid, have all the money, which I understand. They don't want to, you know, get started on a project and not have it, but it, they got really good bids and didn't have a lot of change orders. And so, um, I guess, yeah, they're significantly under budget.
Wow. It's a nice road. I drove on it the other day, which is real fun. I was out there and I was like, well, it's open, I'll see, see how it looks.
Yeah, I don't know what timing on that. They're just working on it. We had asked, when we were in our budget cycle, when we were doing our budget, what the likelihood of getting money back was. So that was in July, I think. And it didn't sound like we were going to get any money back, but the, the, now that the dust has settled, it sounds like the story's changed.
Good news.
Yeah.
So that means that that...
Any other questions for Melissa?
That table, that's kind of the rough beginning of the list, the list, may not have the right numbers on it. So maybe money for other projects, maybe intersections, we don't know. Maybe, maybe the park, whatever.
Right. The, our list, um, with the guidance from this, the city's consultant that kind of helped through the expansion, had more on it than we anticipated having funding for, for that reason. So we have this whole other section at the bottom that was like, if there's more funding, here's what we'd start to tackle. So I think we're in good shape.
Is there any progress on the police department sheriff controversy? That's the wrong word, subject?
Uh, I had been tasked, and I submitted accountability paragraphs to the contract. We originally had given the county, uh, because we're looking for accountability, we're going, between the, uh, what the, the property owners in Hayden pay the county to what's called the justice fund, which is about one, 2.8 million, and what we pay for an enhanced contract, which is another million, so about 3.8 million dollars. Um, we felt, well, I feel like we need to have, know what we're getting. We need to have some accountability. And so we had originally given the county that proposed contract with accountability, and then they sent the contract back and no accountability. And I have a real problem with spending that kind of money and not having any, any accountability. So then I was tasked to provide paragraphs that we are now going to look at for our contract to go back to the county, and we'll see where that goes. But we're, we're, I have some real issues with what we're dealing with. And I'm working through those now. Um, and there, there'll be some more information about that here, because I think the people, I don't think the, the citizens of Hayden have any idea of how complex this arrangement is. And I found that there's inconsistencies with agreements with other cities. Um, and I won't go into all the detail right now, but there, there are some, some things that are bothersome.
Do I have anything else we want to discuss, or do I have a motion for adjournment?
All motion to adjourn.
Anybody want to second?
I'll second it.
Thank you all. Good reception.